I think it's seven thirty and I think we'll get started for the September twenty ninth work session. And our first agenda is the Park and Recreation Department update. And I see that we have a great crowd of support as usual, the Park and Rec Department always is that, I guess, the fun department.
They have lots of friends.
They have lots of friends at the park. So again, Mr. Page?
Mayor Bozen, members of the Des Moines City Council, Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for the time this morning to give our department overview. And with me today, helping me to give the presentation will be Jenny Richmond, our Assistant Director, Mike Gall, our Parks Manager, Janice Steele, our Recreation Manager, and Daniel Calvert, our Development and Planning Administrator. But like the mayor pointed out, we do have two groups here that represent probably our best volunteers, our best advocates, and our best fundraisers. So what you see is a makeup behind us of the Des Moines Parks and Recreation Board and the Friends of Des Moines Parks and Recreation Board. And so they just raise their hand quick. Those are here supporting us. Want to say thank you for being here. As you know, you get to interact with them a lot too. They do a lot of great work for the city when it comes to helping us meet our mission. Yeah, they are great. All right, we got a lot of slides, but mostly pictures because we're Parks and Recreation, right? So you'll see a lot of happy faces hopefully here. So we start with our mission, which is short by design, helping Des Moines live well, play hard, and protect the earth. By the numbers here, you can see that we have seventy-one full-time staff, thirty-nine part-time, which are year-round, but part-time hours, and then those north of three hundred seasonals, which many make up the aquatics team. We won't do a deep dive, that's not the point of today's presentation, but I always think it's important to start where the money comes in and what we do with the money. So you'll see that we're about eighteen million four hundred thousand dollars, and we divide that over what we'll call about eight service lines from parks to trails to rec to cemeteries. Then you can see we return about four point five million dollars in revenue, which the two biggest sources of our revenue are our cemetery operation and our recreational programming. One thing I've always found is we get to have a lot of heads-up advanced on giving presentations. We go to the neighborhood associations with a very similar presentation. We go to service clubs. We go to the downtown business community. So we've made this presentation. In fact, some of you have been in the room when we've given this presentation because you've asked us to do it. When you put up those pie charts, a lot of times these folks that you meet with don't really understand or grasp those big numbers, and they always come down to this one conclusion is, what's the value? You get our tax dollar, what value are you returning? So we found this slide to be very helpful when we talk about what do we do and what do you get for that value? It has to be updated every year, but if you see the keynote at the top here, the median assessed home in Des Moines, which changes, is a hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. So if just back out all the other dollars that go to all the other great city services, and we just talked Parks and Recreation, that house that pays over a hundred and fifty-six dollars a year for Parks and Recreation Services. So I'll pause, but I'll ask you a question. What's one thing that you spent a hundred and fifty-six dollars on in the last year or month? Did you get the ninety-two parks? Did you get these twenty aquatic facilities? Did you get the seventy-plus miles of trail, so forth and so on? We think that's great value, right? And this slide does help us a lot of times because people always are like, wow, I didn't realize there was that many things out there. But there's always one or two that say, that's great, but I don't play golf. Do people actually use your golf courses? Well, it's like, yeah, we had a hundred and thirty thousand rounds of golf last year. Do people go to the pools? Just yesterday, our aquatics team was giving a presentation. We would have filled up the Iowa football and Iowa State football stadiums both, that many people came to the pools last year. And remember, we had not just the five pools, and we had Berlin shut down for about half of the season. So we still see a ton of use. I don't expect to read all this for you, but what I want to point out is, not only are we seeing record participation in all of our things, the pandemic did what maybe nine eleven did for public safety is when things shut down during the pandemic, one of the things that stayed open were our parks and our trails, and that hasn't returned to a low use. In fact, you're going to see some great stats today that show you that programs and park use are beating pre-pandemic levels of usage. So next up will be Jenny Richmond. She's going to talk about the administration side of the department.
Thank you, Ben, and good morning, Mayor Bozen, City Council members, and everybody who's joining us today online and in person. Really appreciate this and very happy to be here. So a large part of my role is administering much of the Administration Division responsibilities. And this team is a team of professionals, holding many specialized and advanced degrees and certifications. We continually pursue professional development and actively contribute to a lot of our professional organizations. Collectively, we hold a combined one hundred and ten years of service just to the city of Des Moines, and more than double that when you count all of our professional experience combined. This institutional knowledge is an important factor in our roles of leadership, support, and continuous improvement. This longevity and dedication allows us to confidently take on the responsibilities of overall operation and management of the department, including the call center, volunteer engagement, community garden teams, leading the centralized services of the department, liaising internally with all the city departments, and collaborating with an incredible number of outside partners, donors, granters, and other supporters. Parks and Recreation is an extremely visible and public-facing department, providing services and facilities that generate deep connections and strengthen community, allowing residents and visitors to make special memories across the whole city. The Administration Division establishes and continues to administer initiatives like our Neighborhood Liaison Program, Weekend and Weeknight On-Call Program, photo and video permits so that the city through Parks and Recreation can be shown far and wide as a great place to live, work, and play, and our own online reservation system for easy access to programming and facility reservations for all types of events and gatherings. We lead the way in facilitating connections with all ages during all seasons and in every neighborhood. This approach contributes to the positive responses to the latest City of Des Moines resident survey in which seventy-seven percent of responses were satisfied with the number of trails. Seventy-five percent were satisfied with the number and location of parks, which you'll see later in the presentation correlates exactly with our ten-minute walk. Seventy-two percent are satisfied with the overall quality of city parks, and residents should rest assured that we and council and city leadership listen to what should be receiving the most emphasis over those next two years, which included pools and green practices. Residents knowing that they can easily reach us in many ways greatly contributes to the trust that we've diligently built over many years. We want to connect with you. We provide stellar frontline customer service on the telephone, online, and in person. In two thousand and twenty-four, we assisted with roughly fifteen thousand calls just to the department's primary phone number and helped over a thousand patrons visiting us in person for assistance. Purposeful and thoughtful engagement resources that are widely accessible contribute to our transparency, and it's another pillar of our engagement that the administrative profession or division provides. From our open monthly Parks and Recreation Board meetings to our materials published both online and in print, like our annual report to the community and our twice-a-year activities guide, we strive to have information available in so many forms that it covers all bases and is found easily in many ways that are efficient and best for you. We have copies hot off the presses for our two thousand and twenty-five Fall and Winter Activities Guide that I think have been distributed to all, and also trail system maps available for everybody. It can be easy for most to feel and experience the comprehensive value of Parks and Recreation, but the administration team is often asked, as Ben mentioned, to communicate this value in ways that are tangible. The Seven Dimensions of Wellbeing developed by the National Recreation and Parks Association is a resource that does just this in a really clear framework. Plus, it helps to quantify very real and essential services that our department delivers to advance access, resilience, and wellbeing. From cultural events that share traditions to economic drivers that provide wide-reaching financial impact to programs like yoga in the park that support emotional wellbeing and personal connections. Environmental stewardship that supports biodiversity, that's necessary for pollinating food sources. Physical activities that inspire individual health and in part benefits teamwork. Outreach that enhances intellectual understanding, enriching all generations, and the many social opportunities that build and grow community, providing a sense of belonging and identity. We are always seeking to do better, to make both small and large changes that enhance results, whether it's intentional incremental steps to improve a process or self-reflection and outside feedback that leads to a major modification or addition. The philosophy of continual improvement is supported by the Administration Division and is driven by the goal of providing the highest level of service in the most efficient and effective ways within our current resources. Examples of where this approach is quite evident include our key performance indicators, chapter seventy-four ordinance and rules updates that happen annually, approach to budget and staffing, planning. This actually led to the Taxpayer Associations of Central Iowa presenting the department within the Public Interest Award that recognizes our aggressive pursuit of efficiency, and system advances like inventory tracking, which led to a deep dive in how we were accounting for our number of parks and resulted in a revised count of our number now landing at ninety-two parks. And I think this is also handed out to you as well. Volunteers are woven throughout the entire organization and help with mission-driven, high-priority work. They help us keep our public lands clean, make recreating and learning accessible to all children, help grow hundreds of thousands of plants in our greenhouse that beautify our parks and neighborhoods and promote growth throughout the city. They take care of us in the worst of times through floods and durachios and tornadoes, and they bring us joy in the best of times. Their work helped us become an award-winning and nationally certified organization. Together, our team led incredible growth and volunteer engagement. In the past fifteen years, more than fifty-two thousand unduplicated volunteers. I'm going to say that again, fifty-two thousand unduplicated volunteers, so roughly a fifth of the city, donated over three hundred and eighty-one thousand hours of service. This service is valued at more than ten point three million dollars, and in two thousand and twenty-four alone, five thousand three hundred and seventeen volunteers donated thirty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine hours of service, also valued at over one point one million dollars. That's three years in a row of more than a million dollars of service donated to Des Moines Parks and Recreation. One of the programs that they administer that I'd like to highlight for you and our volunteers see great pride in the places and spaces that they work in is our Adopt a Park and Adopt a Trail Program. You may remember this from a presentation a few years ago. But in two thousand and twenty-one, the department formalized the Adopt a Park Program, and the program had such potential to do even more that in two thousand and twenty-three, with your support, we were able to add a field coordinator to grow this and other programs. Currently, thirty parks are in the programs and all but four adopted, and one of those four is likely going to be adopted real soon. And eleven trail segments are also adopted. So from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, there was an eighteen point nine increase in hours, nine point nine increase in number of volunteers, and a twenty-five percent increase in value of the donated time to this program. So your support really truly made a huge difference for us. The program primarily focuses on litter removal, but may also include some assistance in other small projects. All tools and supplies are provided, and following the adopter's first event, the recognition sign is installed in the park or trail. All of these resources are available on our website at dsm.city/volunteer. We operate three community gardens. The program increases food security, creates community, reduces environmental impacts by growing food locally, and improves the health and wellness of our community. We have two hundred and forty-two plots, and in two thousand and twenty-four, we hosted over two hundred gardeners, plus more than three hundred volunteers helped to collect and donate eight hundred and fifty pounds of produce that came from these gardens. We work with almost twenty community partners, both for growing opportunities and to host events and programs, such as the Pollinator Palooza and a seed swap workshop. Our department is one of a small few who have the added responsibility and gain the rewards of reporting to a board. The Parks and Recreation Board is met up at fifteen members, as you are all probably very keenly aware. Mayor and council members each appoint two, and one is appointed from Des Moines Public Schools. They advise on the planning, coordination, and execution of recreation programs and facilities, and approve and advise on the department's rules and regulations. They make those recommendations to the council. The department facilitates monthly public meetings with the board and generally hosts an annual tour of parks, facilities, and trails so that the board and others can see firsthand both progress and needs across the entire system. We try to make the commitment to serve on the board as straightforward as possible. You can see here today by the support, members in the audience, just how invested those members really truly are. They go above and beyond in their civic duty, and not only can I not recall a time when we didn't reach quorum, but we have nearly perfect attendance at most of our meetings. We have members ready to actively serve on the board's executive committee, plus the three subcommittees, all of which comes with added responsibility and time commitment. The insight and differing perspectives that they bring to the cemetery, urban conservation, and golf advisory committees is truly invaluable. The department is sincerely grateful to all of our past, present, and future board members. Speaking of the Golf Advisory Committee, administering the golf course management agreements has also been a responsibility of the Administrative Division for the last five years. The city is fortunate enough to have three iconic public courses, all distinct from each other and geographically well-distributed. All three courses are managed and operated by a contractor, C Corporation. There was a big transition for the city about twenty years ago to go to this setup. C Corp has continued success with several of the two thousand and twenty-four KPIs listed on this slide. The five-year averages of all three courses, so from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four, are as follows. Average rounds per year played over those five years, the average, a hundred and sixteen thousand rounds per year. Average total revenue nearing five point six million, and average revenue sharing payment made to the city just over five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. C Corp reports five times a year to the Golf Advisory Committee, and they also provide an annual report to the Parks and Recreation Board, which is then shared with the city manager annually. The reporting indicates a focus on growing the game through enhanced junior programming, reaching demographics that are currently less represented on the courses, and establishing new community partnerships, continuing to implement sustainable practices, and innovative facility upgrades. We are looking forward to many exciting advancements over each of the courses in the near term and for years to come. Serving as primary points of contact for the Friends of Des Moines Parks is also a key responsibility of the Administration Division, and it is truly an honor to be in that spot. First established in nineteen ninety-three, the Friends of Des Moines Parks is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) dedicated to creating a healthier, more vibrant Des Moines community for all. The Friends are committed to four focus areas shown here and do so, so much more. By helping to bridge the gap between public funding and the cost for service delivery to help Des Moines Parks survive and continue to be one of the premier park systems in the country, they collaborate closely with the department so that we may all achieve excellence. The Friends secure philanthropic dollars from grants, private donors, event sponsors, and corporate partners. They continue to extend critical support for swim lesson scholarships, youth sport programs, and making contributions towards upgrading and replacing park amenities. This public-private partnership allows the Friends to adapt quickly and support and assist our cherished public spaces in ways that would not otherwise be possible. This board's impact and that of all board members before them, including Councilmember Voss, is already absolutely one of the key factors in our thriving system. We sometimes say it's the cherry on the top or the icing on the cake, and that might be true, but the advancements this working board has made over the last few years really should not be sugarcoated. If you have any chance to review the fine print, these are impressive accomplishments coupled with administrative advancements that have secured an exciting future for the Friends. And with that, I'll turn it over to Daniel.
Thank you, Jenny. Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of the Plating Division. I am Daniel Calvert, Development and Planning Administrator, and I'm excited to highlight how our division uses planning, design, and project management to enhance parks, trails, and recreational facilities citywide. Our division serves as the project delivery arm of the department, working collaboratively for project implementation. This presentation will highlight the Planning Division's team, role, value-add, and performance outcomes. We translate vision and policy and goals into physical implementation via parks, trails, and recreational amenities. Three overarching themes will emerge: people, processes, and performance outcomes. Our team is often referred to, oh, sorry. Our team is often referred to as the Swiss Army Knife. We're versatile, cost-effective, and we take pride in having the tools to get the job done and in some cases, may save the day or the occasion and project task. Who we are collectively, our team represents a hundred and twenty years of professional experience and forty-six years of City of Des Moines experience. Fortunately for the city, none of our team is nearing retirement despite the extensive professional and institutional knowledge. Our team fosters and develops future professionals as well in the field. Through our ISU studio project support, our planning internships, and other endeavors with schools, colleges, and secondary institutions, our recent interns have obtained full-time career placement throughout the nation, including New York City, Florida, and Midwest, just to mention a few. Our team has been published nationally in numerous publications, presenting to peer cities on multiple platforms, and our work is consistently recognized with numerous awards for performance, innovation, communication, and project delivery. On Thursday just last week, our team was presented with an award for project design and build. How we rate: The City of Des Moines is rated as a top fifteen Park and Recreation System by the Trust for Public Lands on access, investment, amenities, and acreage. Park Score's recognition confirms what we see every day. Parks matter to people's lives. Having a park within a ten-minute walk is a KPI for the department as well as the city, and it's a quality-of-life indicator. Our city's ascent and TPL Park Score is realized through deliberate choices, focusing projects where need and impact intersect. This national standing validates our strategic thoughtful planning and development throughout the city and outcompetes much larger parks and recreation systems because we invest thoughtfully, foster crucial partnerships, leverage grants, and volunteers, as you heard from Jenny. Despite being a smaller planning team than many of our peer cities, we protect the city's investment, and our team delivers impactful projects, proof that smart planning creates big returns for residents and our quality of life here in the city of Des Moines, as well as our bottom line. Our team is managing and increasing project delivery demand for repairs, replacements, and capital projects citywide. Here you can see the ascent of our approved capital improvement budget for Parks and Recreation projects, as well as facilities projects that are operated and coordinated with our team. The increasing project demand will remain a defining factor for our team's workload and project tasks for the foreseeable future. We approach this need with careful planning to align project tasks with approved budgets to ensure every dollar is maximized. Our planning aligns cost savings, community impact, and service continuity. Leveraging funding: Our team treats every city-approved budget not as an endpoint, but as a start point by aggressively pursuing grants, engaging private donors, and coordinating volunteer opportunities such as playground builds, one of our signature volunteer projects operated by the Planning Division with our other divisions and teams. We multiply the impact the city provided funding that we have. Our team's knowledge and success with grant and private funding is extensive and measurable. Over the last five years, our team has been awarded seventeen and a half million dollars in grants. We have applied for seventy-five grants and more. We've provided and supported private donations of seven point six million dollars, and volunteers had contributed hundreds of hours translating into thousands of dollars of value-add advocacy and care. They have contributed seven hundred and fifty-eight hours to our signature volunteer builds, saving the city nearly three hundred thousand dollars in contracted construction costs alone. In addition, in-kind design services valued at three hundred and forty thousand dollars have been facilitated for private services and professional services that would otherwise need to be purchased or deferred, further extending and protecting our limited taxpayer dollars. System sustainability: We take a proactive system approach to sustainability. Through system-wide audits, we identify repairs, replacements, and upgrades that are needed most. We design with durability and long-term value in mind. As example, we have incorporated native vegetation, resilient materials, and innovative infrastructure. We lower these operating costs on the front end and the back end. This eases future maintenance burdens. A key part of this strategy is collaboration with our operations, recreation, and maintenance teams from the very beginning by aligning design to their day-to-day needs and ensuring that we build what we can maintain and reduce workloads downstream and ensure the vitality and use of our park system. Engagement and outreach: Our Planning Division has fully embraced a culture of community engagement. We provide multiple opportunities for residents to share input from onsite and in-person meetings to community events, online questionnaires, and on-demand resources. Online questionnaires and on-demand resources are provided. This layered approach ensures we hear from a broad range of voices and perspectives throughout every stage of our project management and delivery. Community input is not just a box that we check, it's essential for creating projects that meet city standards and truly reflect the neighborhood's needs. These conversations build trust, they create lasting relationships between the city and our residents, and also create projects with ownership and pride from the community. The result is more than just a new playground or trail, it's a space the community feels connected to, invested in, and proud to use and care for. Analysis and Inventory: Our ability to deliver successful projects begins with thorough analysis and data points. Our inventory of the park system supports all of this. We use advanced tools such as GIS or Geographic Information Systems mapping, trail eco-counters, community input analysis to understand expressed needs, emerging priorities, giving us a clearer picture of how people use our spaces today and where their future demand will lie in use, maintenance, replacement, and improvements. We are also embracing new technologies such as City Data AI, which leverages user-provided data to deliver deeper insights into amenity use, demographic patterns, and system-wide trends. A teaser here, we will return to present City Data AI and these new innovative tools to help find out what we can learn more about our parks and recreation system, usage, demographics, demand, and numbers. Collectively, our analysis and inventory expertise allows us to anticipate and respond to identified and anticipated issues and capitalize on opportunities as well. Just as importantly, they help us clearly communicate findings to leadership, the community, and they ensure that our capital investments are data-driven and responsive. Project Design: The Planning Team is deeply involved in leading the project design phase of all of our projects, ensuring that every element support the shared vision for vibrant, sustainable, and accessible park spaces. Community Input is a cornerstone of our design project. We actively gather feedback from residents, as you heard, stakeholders, user groups, to ensure the final design reflects the needs and desires of the community and our leadership. Operational and Recreational Program Planning is integrated to make use, maintenance, longevity, and management practical and efficient once the park is online and ready for use. We begin with an iterative process of conceptual layouts, crafting design intent that outlines the flow, the functionality, and the aesthetic use of each and every park and trail. Innovative and Accessible Design Strategies and Materials, Equipment, Color Selection are all carefully considered to ensure durability, safety, appeal, and long-term use. We incorporate adaptive reuse strategies where appropriate, repurposing existing structures and materials whenever possible to preserve the resource, reduce the cost, honor the place and time, and craft a repurposed vibrant space. Finally, the team leverages natural resources, integrating green spaces, landscapes, and environmental features to enhance aesthetics, sustainability, ecological impact, and immersion. Project Management: Our Planning Team plays a crucial role in ensuring the successful delivery of city parks and recreation projects. One of our primary responsibilities is reviewing the approved design documents, reviewing and approving the design documents. This process guarantees that each project meets the city's standards, aligns with the overall vision, and prioritaries used of our public spaces. We establish clear front-end design parameters for project development, working closely with city engineering and our design consultants. Collaboration is at the heart of our work. We engage with city engineering, inspection teams, external consultants, general contractors to coordinate efforts, solve challenges which always occur in construction, and ensure that all aspects of a project progress as designed and as contracted. As stewards of project funding with finance in the lead, we manage diverse sources of capital improvement dollars, grant dollars, private donors' dollars, and contributions. We are committed to transparent and efficient use of these funds. Ensuring accountability to stakeholders, we actively provide project updates to the public and stakeholders, maintaining open lines of communication and transparency throughout the project lifecycle. This includes addressing concerns, sharing milestones, building strong relationships with community members, trust, project partners, and private donors. They all trust in our communication throughout the entire process. Building and Maintaining These Relationships is that continued support, collaboration, and a shared commitment to enhancing the city's parks and recreation spaces. So here in closing, I just wanted to highlight a few of our current projects. You may recognize several of these through a very diverse selection of current projects that depict the complexity, range, and number of park planning projects that are in active development. And again, this is just an offering of examples. Completed Projects: This slide highlights several notable park and recreation projects that have recently been successfully completed by the Planning Team. Projects range from trail development to playground improvements to facility renovations and environmental enhancements. This range of projects helps to emphasize the variety of Planning Division projects that we have completed, demonstrating the project planning team's commitment to creating vibrant, functional, sustainable parks, trails, and recreational facilities across our entire So on this final slide, I want to show a celebration of the collective impact and proven service delivery of the Planning and Development Division. With your support, from engagement to volunteering, the leadership has been crucial in our delivery of project success. The Division exemplifies fiscal responsibility, technical expertise, and dedication to professional service delivery across all of our projects. Design, Construction: From initial concept to ribbon-cutting, our work involves coordination with numerous city departments and relies heavily on strong internal and external relationships with engineering, finance, procurement, and legal, just to name a few. This collaboration and community engagement are some of the most rewarding aspects of our job, allowing us to create meaningful, sustained, and well-loved public spaces where memories and moments are made. Thank you for your continued support of our Division, the Planning Division of Parks and Recreation, and the opportunity to serve our communities in which we live, work, and play. We look forward to continuing to bring our passion and expertise to enrich our city and your parks. Thank you very much.
And I will now pass it to Mike.
Thanks. Mayor Bozen, Members of Council, Mike Gall, Parks Manager. It's my pleasure to be here to talk to you about the role of the Parks Division. Overall, the Division supports park users and our mission of the department by performing day-to-day operational park maintenance. The Division consists of 41 full-time employees, five permanent part-time employees, and 44 seasonal positions that range from seven months to 120 days on the teams that are listed on the upper right. With these positions, our teams cover 365 days a year, including evening, night, and weekend shifts. Before getting started with our teams, I think it's important to note that in 2009, our Division went through a reorganization where we made a fundamental shift from our zone-type maintenance teams to a more focused responsibility teams that cover certain responsibilities but cover the entire city, not just one geographic area. Along with setting up specialized teams of responsibility, volunteers were and continue to be integrated into assisting maintenance responsibilities. So we'll get started. Our Cemetery Team maintains eight cemeteries, including the recently added Glendale Masonic Cemetery. This team performs maintenance on about 400 acres and performs interments and other cemetery operations, such as working closely with a family at a sensitive time in their life after the loss of a loved one, to digging foundations and monitoring the mowing contractor that performs the mowing and trimming. Last year, we sold 416 spaces and performed 575 interments. The Cemetery Team operates six days per week. The team also interacts with funeral home providers, monument companies, and engages volunteers at a high level, which they perform many important tasks to help cemeteries stay in great condition. Volunteer value at cemeteries was in the range of $175,000 in 2024, and as many of you have seen after the tornado that hit Glendale Cemetery, the team takes pride in providing quality cemetery grounds and services. The Grounds Crew Team consists of eight full-time, 12-seven-month, five utility workers, and five pool maintenance positions. Along with general grounds maintenance of parks, this team maintains our restrooms, open-air shelters, and certified pool operators that maintain our five pools and aquatic centers. The majority of our park system is contracted out in regards to mowing, which this team also administers that contract, but does perform the mowing and turf culture at Riverview Park and all of the other turf work in parks outside of mowing. The team also has the responsibility of maintaining and inspecting over 70 playgrounds with a certified playground safety inspector. One of many important public-facing tasks this team performs is restroom cleaning. Here's a photo of a self-contained cleaning unit that we use to travel to our 30-plus restroom locations in the park system, as well as an example of a workspace at a pool. This team is also the frontline staff that cleans trash and litter from park grounds and prepares our parks each day, which, as you can see in these photos, can be a challenge at times, but this crew does its best to prepare parks and have them in good condition each day. The next crew consists of teams that maintain our natural resources, a heavy equipment team, and trail maintenance in the park system. This team also consists of a single park equipment technician that maintains our small park maintenance equipment, such as chainsaws and tillers, but also does other tasks like welding broken soccer goals. Large equipment and vehicles goes to fleet services. Our Heavy Equipment Team consists of equipment operators and park and cemetery maintenance workers that perform many different aspects for the department. One project I'd like to highlight here is a project at the entrance of the Ewing Dog Park, which was updating and correcting some safety and maintenance issues. The project was designed by our park planners, as Daniel just mentioned, and then applied in the field primarily by our heavy equipment team, which these photos show the before, during, and after. This team assists the entire department in many projects. The center photo is our clam truck, which is one of our more important pieces of equipment for the department. Trails are likely our most-used park amenity in our system. We maintain over 80 miles of paved multi-use trails that connect to over 600 miles of regional trails, and then also 21 soft-surface trail miles. 2025 has had multiple trail closures due to flooding and a lot of construction projects, but we're still seeing our trail use in high demand. The photos to the right are trails after floodwater has come up and come down, and this team does clean up those trails after that occurs. The team also is tasked to prepare the trail system for events, and this heavy use of trails. 3.3 million trips were recorded in 2024 with over 9,000 daily uses of our trail system. These numbers are captured from trail counters along the trail system. In the photo to the right is a large air blower that was donated by the Friends of Des Moines Parks, which reduced the cleaning of our trails from two passes with our old blower to just one with this, and really, really made a big improvement on our ability to clean trails. We have one full-time employee and one seven-month position assigned to trails. The natural resource aspect of maintaining parks has evolved a lot over the last decade due to the transitioning of a lot of maintenance practices towards natural areas, such as prescribed burning, prairies and woodlands, and rain gardens being put into improvement projects. This team also transitions areas that have been previously mowed into native areas that improve habitat and pollinators. This team is tasked with water quality restoration efforts, and these are photos of improvement at Whitmer Park Pond before and after. The team also maintains a solar field area south of our new greenhouse and coordinates our urban conservation committee. The team operates a forestry mower, which we are using to reclaim woodlands from invasive species, as you can see in the photos to the right, which are before and after, and the left is it in action. The next team consists of six full-time employees, four permanent part-time, 11-seven-month, and three utility workers that are teamed up to maintain ornamentals, Grays Lake, greenhouse production, and oversee downtown maintenance. This team performs the maintenance on our ornamental collections at the Claire &amp; Miles Mills Rose Garden at Greenwood Park and the Lilac Arboretum at Ewing Park, along with mini landscaped ornamental beds in our park system. Grays Lake is one of our most-used parks and requires multiple staff to cover the hours of operation and responsibility due to its high use. The Grays Lake team also performs the mowing and high-quality turf culture at the Papa John Sculpture Park. The new greenhouse facility we just moved into in June of 24 is a 15,000-square-foot LEED-certified facility where we produce over 320,000 annuals each year. Additionally, we grow perennials and natives that are planted into the park system. Volunteers greatly supplement the greenhouse production capabilities by transplanting and performing many different duties. One full-time employee and one permanent part-time person covers 365 days a year at the greenhouse, and without volunteers, the success of the greenhouse would be a challenge. In total, under this team, volunteers supplement about $290,000 in valued service. So I've covered a portion of the highlights of what we maintain with our arrangement of teams, but all of these items and park amenities listed need some sort of maintenance, which this team performs. To perform all of this maintenance, it takes a diverse and specialized training and equipment and certifications. Staff hold certifications and training to perform prescribed burning, playground safety inspections. We have a certified crane operator, and we have certifications to operate pool equipment, as well as most of our staff is licensed with the Iowa Department of Ag and Land Stewardship. In addition to the regular park-type maintenance that we just discussed, we do some other projects that you maybe wouldn't expect the Division to perform. So one is the flashboard installation on the Center Street Dam, which just happened a few weeks ago in coordination with the recreation team. The team performs day and night route and residential snow operations with public works in addition to all of the snow removal that occurs on park areas and trails. Our Division also provides wildlife management aspects for the city with the goose management plan and the urban deer hunt, which occurs on park property and private property. Our maintenance team is talented and takes pride in supporting department initiatives and to provide the public with clean and maintained park grounds. The use of volunteers, efficient use of contractors, many partners, and most importantly, the dedication of our staff and the support from all of you create the success of our Division. Next, Janice will talk Recreation. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Bozen and Members of the City Council. I'm Janice Steele, Recreation Manager. And aren't these guys impressive so far? So yay, yeah. They're amazing, and we're on the downward, we're trending down right now. You're almost done. Oh, and I went the wrong way. Let's go the other way. Recreation has 13 full-time staff members that program almost 365 days a year, and in many cases, multiple times a day and evenings. They have many different certifications and graduate degrees. I'm not going to go through them all, but some of the most impressive are, we have four staff members that are certified parks and recreation professionals, one that is a certified parks and recreation executive, one of only four in the state of Iowa, and we have three more that have received scholarships from IPRA to sit for that test this year, and one to sit for the CPRE test this year. So that's pretty impressive, I think. That just shows their dedication to the profession and wanting to serve the city of Des Moines. Throughout this presentation, I'll share some of our special programs and memories with you and photos, but I'm going to try to make it real quick for you. So, summer camp, we continue to offer summer camp at five sites chosen due to their economic need in the city, and we also place one of each in the four wards. Camp remains free due to many generous partnerships, and the kids receive breakfast, lunch, and a snack daily, as well as swim lessons, mini field trips, and enrichment programs. This is just some of the fun photos, and I'll try to stick one of those in as we go through each of the programs, so you can see some of the fun that they have throughout the summer. This picture was a one-week-long art camp at Evelyn K. Davis Park, where campers participated in 20 unique art studios, ranging from painting, sketching, hip-hop, breakdancing, drumming, flag-twirling, drama, spoken word, fiber art, mini murals, and puppet-making. In the fall of 2024, we began offering adapted programming. In the fall of 2024, we began offering adapted programming, utilizing current staff and volunteers. To date, we've hosted 12 sessions across all programming areas listed above, with a consistent group of parents and participants eager to attend. We've had waitlists for several programs like soccer, kayaking, and swim lessons. We've also offered sensory swim and skates at our Brenton Skating Plaza and at our swimming pools. We also received over $15,000 in grant money through HDR grant that helped us to purchase adapted equipment so that we could get this program off the ground and running, up and running. And here's some of our other fun pictures from adapted youth programs. Mobile Recreation through our Parks and Recreation, our Park and Play Van, has been a huge success getting programs out into the community where there are program deserts. We received the van donated through Friends of Des Moines Parks and supported with Bravo late in the fall of 2024. So programming officially kicked off in the spring of 2024 and continued throughout the summer. We still show up at a lot of other events when we can, and we try to market the van and our other programs in the city. So far, we've served more than 2,500 people in 375 hours of programming in the first year so far. The last community engagement program that we offer is free after-school programming at the MLK Center, Pioneer Columbus, and Four Mile Community Recreation Centers, and that goes from September through December, Monday through Thursday, from 4:00 to 7:00, and is free of charge to the public. Seguing into environmental ed, as a one-man show, Joel Van Ropel consistently provides approximately 70 programs annually. He has a huge following for his programs, but especially his Walk in the Park with Joel, which many of you council members and the mayor have joined him with to show up and participate with. The city of Des Moines has been recognized as a bird-friendly community since 2023 and is a member of the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge since 2015. Thanks to Joel, one of the monarch butterflies tagged in Des Moines in our environmental program has been discovered in Mexico 1,500 miles away, so that's pretty cool, we think. Special events, we host numerous special event programs throughout the year that offer programming to families, children, and adults, and many are holiday-themed, and here's just a list of them above. Let's see here. Our special event supervisor also programs trail rentals, large park events, and also participates in planning large citywide events. These events require a great deal of coordination with numerous partners and team members. There were 41 approved trail permits with an estimated 20,000 users in 2024, and thus far in 2025, there have been 42 approved permits with almost 25,000 users. As you know, we have pools in five neighborhoods, in addition to four splash pools and 18 spray grounds, which are free to the public. Beginning in the spring of 2025, the city of Des Moines will offer its first indoor swimming pool at the Reichardt Community Recreation Center. Total attendance, excuse me, total attendance in the summer of 2025 at the swimming pools was 110,883, and this is slightly down from 2024, but that is probably because Birdland opened about a month late, and we missed all the swim teams that typically swim in the morning and the evenings, and some of those swim lessons in the morning. We did try to move them over to North High School so we could accommodate those kiddos that couldn't make it to another pool. And then we also had a number of community members that stepped up and tried to assist some of the people and paid for some admissions. Up to 15, over 15 days were paid for for the first 100 people in the pool that summer, totaling over $2,000. So that was nice. One of our really great splash pool pictures. And due to your support in 2022 to revamp the pay structure and the benefits for all seasonal employees, we have had success in hiring the needed amount of staff, not only at the pools, but for camps and for Grays Lake. So thank you for that, and because of that, this year, we had a record-high hiring of lifeguards. And the reason that's really important is because when we did the survey, when we redid all the benefits, one of the most important things wasn't the pay, and it wasn't maybe the buying of the swimming suit or any of that, it was the flexibility in their schedule. So when we hire more, we can really provide that flexibility in scheduling, so people can have time off, they can take vacations, and so thank you for that. Just some nice aquatic pictures. Let's see, in 2025, we taught 3,731 swim lessons, 1,256 of which were on scholarship. Fortunately, we're able to continue our $20,000 scholarship funding provided by Variety, the children's charity, with assistance from Friends of Des Moines Parks. Thank you. And we also receive $11,500 in scholarship funding from the American Red Cross Centennial Program, which also provides us with a lot of training funding for lifeguards, swim lessons, instructors, and lesson instructors, and yeah, and management. There we go. Sorry. And here's some of our fun pictures from instructing and some lessons. And segueing into athletics. Let's see here. Athletics has programming for all ages, including youth in Pee-wee basketball, volleyball, soccer, baseball, flag football, tennis, rugby, and kickball. Adult sports include many of the same, as well as adult frisbee, bag, softball, pickleball, and ultimate frisbee. We had 227 volunteer coaches in 2025. Over 7,000 balls were handed out for the Every Kid Gets a Ball program since the program started in 2022, which is pretty impressive. In 2024, more than 3,000 youth and Pee-wee participants participated in sports, with 47% of them being eligible and used scholarships. We use 30 different parks and community centers were used for athletic programming, and many of those sites were in neighborhood parks or schools that were made possible by our 28E agreement with our Des Moines Public Schools and allowed our kids to practice in gyms and places close to their homes. Here's one of our many Every Kid Gets a Ball pictures, made possible by our generous sponsors and also generously attended by many of you in the room and in the audience as well, and made possible by Friends of Des Moines Parks. And here's a picture of athletics. We many times do our basketball championships at the NAP Center, which is really fun for the kids. Also, pickleball, as you know, is very popular, and flag football. We also program our sports complexes, not only for our own programming, but we bring in many tournaments. And in 2024, county baseball and soccer scheduled 275 tournaments, and 2025, we've scheduled these facilities 333 times so far. Excuse me. Drop-in numbers at the community recreation centers have gone up 2% from 2024 to 2025, which is pretty good considering we're only open Monday through Friday, 8 to 8. But we've really focused on increasing the amount of programs in these centers because we don't want to see the rooms sitting empty. We'd like to offer programs for kids. So we have increased our yoga programming, we've increased them from two to five classes, we've increased, we have hip-hop and street dance classes, we have offered HIIT classes and adapted programming, drop-in to kra as well as cheer classes, and added table tennis over, well, table tennis has been going on a long time over at Four Mile, and averages 25 participants twice a week, and there's eight different countries represented. And in the spring of 2026, we're going to have the first indoor aquatic, or community recreation center in Des Moines that offers indoor swimming and indoor walking and jogging track. And there's some construction photos for you. If you haven't driven by, you probably should. It's really coming along nicely. And then we move right along to our special facilities team that covers Brenton Skating Plaza, enclosed shelters, dog parks, Grays Lake, boat rentals, and concessions. And as most of you probably know, we have three dog parks. An annual permit is $20. We sold in 2024, City Clerk's Office sold 1,767 passes, and we've hosted many open houses and various special events at the dog park. We continue to try to get people out there and take care of those participants. At Brenton Skating Plaza, our total attendance in 2024-25 was 19, over 19,000, and we have a number of partners that we partner with for special events throughout the season, starting with the Drake Hoops Fest, which will be our third year before the ice is put down, which happens this week, if anyone would like to come out on Thursday. That kicks off, and then the start of the season, we have a tree lighting and kicks off in conjunction with East Village Promenade, which signifies the opening of the ice rink, hopefully, weather permitting. The ice rink has a Zamboni sponsorship from Unity Point and an endowment from Principal Financial that helps to offset any negative expenditures, and also helps to sponsor economically-challenged individuals to come skating. We also oversee 11 enclosed shelters, which are rented 1,350 times in 2024. That has steadily gone up in the last five years. We open these, greet people, clean them, take care of them. The number that I think is pretty crazy is the total shelter uses paid and unpaid, and that includes enclosed and open-air shelters, were utilized almost 12,000 times in 2024. That's just amazing to me. So, just goes to show, as Ben started out, the whole presentation, that parks are really necessary and people use them all the time. Grays Lake Park, watercraft rentals for 2025, we rented out boats 3,376 times, but since we've rented them out from the beach side this year because of the construction over at the terrace side, that was probably down just a little bit, but we usually rent from both sides. So it was just a little glitch, but we think that that will just be fabulous when the new dock is open on the terrace side in 2026. And bike rentals also were put on hold this year because we didn't have anywhere to safely store them. We usually keep them in the terrace building, so those will be back on in 2026. We're super excited about that opening up, but also offering the concessions over at the beach side and boat rentals with the new parking spray over there. We think that'll go crazy, our concessions over there. So we're looking forward to all of that being open in the near future. And then we also do a few things. We partner with a number of groups to either provide programming that we don't have the capacity to provide and utilize spaces and expertise provided by partners that maybe we don't have. We work closely with Catch Des Moines to attract large events to the city, with the most recent being the National Senior Games and Ironman, which recognizes huge economic impact to the city of Des Moines. Captain Royce provides spaces for programming and events and provides music venue to the city year-round, providing a portion of revenue profits back to the department. In our agreement with Des Moines Public Schools mentioned earlier, allows us to utilize gym and field spaces for youth to practice in their neighborhoods, plus it gives us a lot of indoor space that we just don't have. So we share that for basketball, which is our largest program. Des Moines Metro Disc Golf has 2,000 members and in agreement with our department to provide programming at our disc golf course and minor maintenance and repairs, as well as serving as the eyes and the ears of the community, so if there's anything that we need to look at or make minor repairs, they will let us know. And Des Moines Cycle Across Teams reemerged in the last two years to practice at a few of our parks and provide clinics to emerging cycle across riders, culminating in hosting a large cycle across race at George Davis Park. And we also oversee the Marina Operations at Birdland Park, serve as liaison to the Heritage Carousel Foundation and Des Moines Rowing Clubs, facilitate flashboard installation and removal, and also nine of our 13 full-time staff members serve as liaison to our neighborhood associations. We work closely with Parks Area Foundation and are as a liaison to Riverview Park Amphitheater and scheduling events and oversight, and hopefully, in 2026, we will be reopening Simonestus. So, you heard it here, I hope. Anyway, just that kind of wraps up as fast as I could get through a lot of our, we have so much more going on that I would love to share with you, and I would just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for letting us be here. I wish all of our staff could be here to let you know how much they love working for the city and how much they love what they do, and I think it shows. If you ever get out to a program, please come on out and visit. We would love to have you, and thanks. And turn it over to Ben.
Just three slides left. So you've heard a lot about how we benchmark ourselves and how we decide where we need to move the resources to be the highest and best use, something that will never lose its luster for our staff, our boards, and I'm sure all of you, was when 2022, we were presented the national gold medal, essentially the top Parks and Recreation Agency in the nation. We spent well more than a decade listening and learning to aspirational Parks and Recreation departments, and I'm here to tell you, you just saw it, but we are now the aspirational city ourself. I get calls monthly from Norwalk to New York City, yes, New York City, asking, "How did you build a foundation that's strong that can raise that much money? How do you have that volunteer network that can do that many hours with that many unique numbers of volunteers?" Something we should all be proud of, what we built here, and it's taken a long time, but I tell you, we have the passion, we have the right team, which is everybody in the room. When you think about what we do, I want to re emphasize one more point. You heard Daniel talk about it, when we do projects, we don't do nothing alone. It takes the community, but we have some pretty amazing internal resources here. We work every day with things like engineering and finance and HR and legal. I just talked to Jeff the other day, we got legal so busy with all these great partnerships here, he's like, "You could slow down at any time," really. So thank you to everybody, especially, I see Nick here from finance, thank you. We spend a lot of his money all the time, so I always have a challenge for Nick, try to find more, but it just doesn't happen by ourselves. We want to make sure everybody knows that, we want to be thankful. How did we get north of 364 days of programming? That's just what we do with our staff. I don't expect you to read this, these are the folks that have an ongoing, daily impact in our park system, whether it be that Disc Golf Club, the BMX Derby, Soapbox Derby Track at Ewing. I mean, all these groups come out and make programs, facilities, amenities happen for us. I will tell you, it might sound strange, but in 2008, when we had that last round of bad budgets, it gave us an opportunity to reinvent ourselves in a way that we are more lean, and we have more partners, and we have more advocates than we've ever had. You just have to find a way to be creative with it, and we've done that, as you can see, as a team. Lastly, I want to thank all of you, you've been great, whether you have to test the slides for us with Councilmember Gatto and Boss, or you just show up to pick up trash. It's been wonderful to have you at every turn, right? We see you not only at the dedications, which are the fun things, but I want to make sure the community understands, when we've called you to volunteer, whether it pick up trash every year or whatever it might be, you show up, and you show up strongly with us, and you help spread the word. And again, you saw so many things, and we hear it less, but we need everybody's help here, that we're so much that we do that some people don't have any idea. So hopefully today, you'll learn something that you can share with your constituents. And with that, thank you for an hour. We really appreciate it, telling that story. So questions?
No, really, we love picking up trash and sliding down slides, and ribbon cutting, but the work you do each and every day, we can't thank your staff enough for making our city what it is, because this is really what touches every citizen, and they can do it at no cost. The amenities you've provided and the creativity is amazing. So all we can really say is thank you for what you do, and thank you for all the citizens that volunteer the hours. It's absolutely incredible. That shows what our community is all about, that if we come together, we get good things done. So thank you again, and if anybody else would like to comment, I will open it up.
The text messages that go out, do you have any idea how many people were getting trail updates?
So we have a "No Before You Go" text alert, and it's used for a lot of things. There's subgroup, so what Carl Voss, Councilmember Voss, is talking about is one for trails, which is getting used a lot. I can get you a report on that, that's not hard, I don't have it off the top of my head, but...
Was that new?
It's about 10 years old already.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we use it for adult sports and youth sports, in case we have lightning in the pool, so you can tell, hey, you got to leave early, or we have to cancel a game. So, you know, we try, like Jenny said in her slides, we want to make sure we can communicate in whatever way is best and most convenient for our users. So we have social media, text alerts, the website, you name it, the call center. And then we have a staff member on call every night, every weekend. We rotate our SPMs, our non-hourly employees get to be on, get to be on call up to three weeks a year, so we rotate. So we rotate that.
Okay, and this, I think Daniel mentioned the city AI, could you give just a, just, not a deep dive in that, but just explain what that's about?
Really excited to get this going. So a year ago, we saw this at our national conference, a lot of these aspirational cities are using this module, it's a company called City Data AI. They have different modules for different departments, but if you would look on your website, City Data Parks Module, it gives us counts of what's happening in our parks. We've been very good to talk about trail counts, but parks come in all shapes and sizes, and there isn't just one entry point, like a trail has to, you have to cut across a trail where we can have two lasers that will break when you cross that laser point. Well, this will give us, based on cell phone carrying data, not only demographics, but how many people are using our parks and cemeteries. We can use it for a lot of things. For example, we could use it to tell you as the capital budget becomes more challenging, we might have some difficult discussion, decisions, and we will. Does this park amenity actually get used? So what we've done is we've created north of 800 geo fences, so one park might have two dozen, right? So I'll use Ewing Park as our biggest example, this will help you understand the lower ones, but there's a lilac outrydom, there's a dog park, there's the Ashley Oakland Playground there, there's a Soapbox Derby Track. All those things will have their own individual fences. We can run reports for you as well as our team. It'll help our maintenance side, Mike Galk can see which parks are being more used, and that way for trash collection, we can go to different parks instead of just going to every park and presuming the trash is full. We can look for even damages that might happen in our parks if they were carrying a cellphone, like the Green Bridge, we might be able to work with our police department to say, was that person silly enough to carry a cellphone with them that night? And that would help us there too. So lots of tools, we will be onboarding this over the next month, we want about 30 to 60 days to kind of dial it in ourself, and then we hope to do a workshop to show you what you're seeing. I'll tell you, we've always said, millions of people are using the parks, we're going to be able to prove that now.
So you could even get like the count of the number of people that were at the Union Park Porch Fest?
You could, as long as they were inside the park. For example, even for permitting purposes, a lot of times we have a permit system based on honor, so if you tell us you only had 500 people there, it will tell us if you had 5,000. And that's why all cities have used this in the past too. So we'll have lots of impact to tell the story on. Again, we want to use it for the economic impact, we want to use it for difficult decisions coming up in the budget too. State of Iowa is the only other client right now, so they've been using it for two years at their state parks.
The reclassification, so now we have 92 parks, that's a new number.
Yes.
Could you help, help understand what, what was added and what, what the reclassification was?
Yeah, it wasn't that, we just found these, by the way, and that was a question we had at the Park and Recreation Board. So over time, a lot of parks have been added, we just haven't updated our number. And we looked at how we classify parks, so that new number of 92 consider, consists of new parks, like the Catherine Creek Park, that's one example that popped to my head, but it also does not count like the golf courses and cemeteries and sports complexes, those aren't included in there. So what we had to do is sit down and look at all the things over the years that we've added. And we find occasionally, believe it or not, through old real estate records, that there is still land that was gifted in the seventies to the Parks Department, but never got developed, but they are dedicated and recorded as parks. So we added all those in, and over time, that'll help us fill some of those gaps. I'll send you a great presentation we gave the Park Board, it's really nice, I'll get it to you all, it'll walk, you can kind of scroll through it if you still have questions and give me a ring.
Chris?
Just add to your team that you have an outstanding group of people, and every interaction I've ever had with them has been really impressive, and I appreciate that. It's also probably important to say, I've never watched a really, really good team that didn't have a really good leader. Thank you, Ben, you do a great job. We get asked, you know, people that think we're falling short in some ways, you know, what's the city doing about sustainability, about diversity and inclusion, about economic opportunities for people? And my first thought and answer always is our park system. And I think we take for granted the impact that you have on the quality of life for so many families that are just looking for a chance to spend time with each other, to do things that, that help them grow as people, that help them recreate. And I, you've heard me say this a lot, I, I love driving by our parks, and even though I see it all the time, I'm never not surprised at the level of diversity and activity that is going on there. And it's, it's really great that the Parks Department has kept up with the changing demographics of Des Moines and the investments that you've made. When we redo parks, we're, you know, we're, we're not building a lot of tennis courts and softball diamonds, you know, our community is different and needs new ways to recreate because of their own culture and interests. And I just couldn't be happier and more proud of our Parks Department for really leading the way. We take it for granted too much that the reason why we have the parks is to solve all those issues that are, you know, always at the front of our mind, and that we think that we have to set up a different department or do something different, or, 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 or do something new, but the Parks Department has always, and, and no more than today, addressed those issues and helped us provide the kind of community we want for all. So great job to you and everybody that you work with. I'm so thankful that we have Des Moines Parks, 92 of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman said something to me once that we actually use, I don't know if you remember saying this or not, but it helps us a lot when we have public processes or difficult things to decide. Chris told us one time that he looks at parks as a great equalizer, brings everybody together, doesn't matter your economic background or any of the demographics you think about when you think about our makeup of our community. And so we try to make sure we make decisions based on getting more people access, making sure bringing more diverse cultures together, because I think, I mean, today's world, we need to bring people together.
Yeah. Well done to your whole team.
Got a great team, as you just saw.
Yeah. Now, move on to Fleet Services. This is the real nitty-gritty, thank you.
Good job.
Thank everyone for coming in to be supportive, so.
Thank you.
Nick, thank you for being willing to follow up after parks in that regard.
I can't say this will be as exciting, but it's pretty essential.
Parks utilizes some of the stuff we're talking about.
Honorable Mayor and, and council members, we're going to have a few less slides, I knew I was going behind parks, so we only have a few, few things to cover today. This is really just kind of update on our, our fleet makeup and different things like that. I wanted to take a quick opportunity to highlight some of the staff that's going to, that heads up our fleet. We have Bob Kraft back there in the blue polo, he's been with us for quite a bit of time. And then Chad Stone here is our new Fleet Services Administrator. He was hired at the beginning of the calendar year, and we luckily got him from the Iowa National Army National Guard. After he decided to retire, he came to work with us. So he's been a, one of our talented new hires that finance has had here for Fleet Services. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Chad to give you the update from Fleet Services.
Mayor Bozen, Council, thanks for being here today. It's truly a privilege to be able to stand in front of you, to give you an informational discussion about some of the things that are going on in Fleet Services. As Nick alluded to, I spent over 30 years in the military, and I will tell you that the key to public speaking that I learned in 30 years is to be brief, be brilliant, and be gone. And if I can achieve two of those three benchmarks, I will consider this a success today. So I do want to give accolades real quick to Bob Kraft. Bob has spent over 30 years with the city. Bob has been a key ingredient to helping me transition from my military career into the career with the city, and I'm so grateful that he's part of the team. And I just want you to know that you have tremendous employees that literally keep the fleet running for the city of Des Moines. So we've got a few agenda topics, really what I want to focus on is just give you an idea of what the fleet looks like, discuss a little bit about the fuel transition update, because when I first came onboard with the city of Des Moines, Nick sat down with me and said that there was a carbon neutral initiative. And, and so I did some dig, deep diving into that as I've tried to get familiar with the city and the way we do business over the last nine months. And so as a form of accountability, I want to show you where we've been and where we're going. And then I also want to take a look, as the fleet administrator, the final thing that I'll discuss with you is really, my job is to look forward for the next three to five years and in some instances beyond. Frankly, I need to anticipate the changes that will occur in the environment, so we're prepared and have the resources available when the time is right, so we can exploit those opportunities. And so we'll discuss a little bit about what we're doing with recruiting and trying to look at the next generation of mechanics. Now, this next slide is really, really busy, so I want to break it down for you. If you take a look at the lower right-hand corner of the heat map, you'll see that Fleet Services is responsible for over 1,300 pieces of equipment. Now, that means that we have 26 mechanics assigned to the shop, which equates to about 50 pieces of equipment per mechanic that they have to service for both scheduled services like oil changes, tire rotations, things of that nature, and also unscheduled maintenance, things that get damaged, snow plows that wear out and they, they have to have the blades replaced. And that's pretty, pretty tremendous when you think about it. You can see in the heat map, there are some things that, that we really need to focus on as we take a look at transitioning to different types of fuel. The key thing is that we've got a number of pickup trucks and service bodies that rely on unleaded fuel, and we'll talk about that here in just a moment. To the left of the slide, you see the pie graph, and what that illustrates is that 83% of our equipment right now relies on unleaded fuel and diesel fuel. You'll note that there are 11% of the, the pieces of equipment that don't require fuel. And so as a preparatory means, I want to get ahead of you and answer what those are. Those would be things like seasonal equipment, trailers, things of that nature that don't require any fuel whatsoever, but nonetheless, they are a moving agent that keeps the city going and services the citizens of Des Moines. And so it's important to note that those are, are factored in there. You'll see that we've got just, just 4% of our fleet right now is hybrid and 2% are electric. And so I want to talk briefly about where we, where we've been. In 2019, we had 40 hybrid vehicles in, in the city. And what happened is, in our current year, when we ended fiscal year '25, we ended with 50 vehicles, which was a 25% increase over where we had been. Through advancements, through working with a lot of our key stakeholders, what we have been able to accomplish is we will be adding an additional 16 hybrid vehicles this next year, or excuse me, 26 hybrid vehicles this next year. And so what that means is at the end of FY '26, we will end with 76 hybrid vehicles, which is an 88% increase over the last seven-year period, which is pretty significant. So we're making gains for carbon neutrality. Something that I'd like to, to really highlight is, I'd like to call out the Police Department and, and let you know that the Police Department is really leading the charge with the hybrid technology. Last year, they purchased the first 15 hybrid police interceptors that they use for their day-to-day operations, and they've had great success, so much so that they requested another 16 for this next fiscal year. And it's safe to say that the Police Department probably have the most demanding and the highest use of the vehicles, and if we can, if we can make a customer like that happy, then that speaks volumes to the quality of the hybrid vehicles that we have available for purchase. And so, you know, if you get a chance to talk to the Des Moines Police, I would encourage you to, to ask them what their experience has been with the hybrids, but I want you to know that they're leading the charge from the city. As we, as we look ahead, in contrast to the, the hybrid vehicles, the electric vehicles in 2019, we had one, and we ended last year with 29. What I found as I take a look at the, at assessing the vehicle fleet, there's really three things that have affected our ability to continue exploring these new technologies and these more fuel-efficient technologies. The first is cost, the second is characteristics, and the third is DAS availability. So when we take a look at cost, one of the concerns is that a hybrid vehicle typically runs between $3,000 and $8,000, less expensive over a 10-year lifecycle than an electric vehicle. And believe it or not, hybrid vehicles are actually less expensive over a 10-year lifecycle than what a standard unleaded or diesel fuel vehicle are. And so that's pretty remarkable. So cost is one of the considerations that we factor in. And we'll talk about the screening criteria for vehicle replacement in the next slide, but I want to talk through these because they're important points. Characteristics is another important point to discuss. Each department has its unique characteristics for vehicles that they require. For example, the library is completely happy with their electric vehicle fleet because they don't, they aren't required to go off-road. They pretty much remain on the roads, they have short trips that are, that are very short in duration, and so they're very competent and capable vehicles to handle their demands. Other departments have other characteristics, they need a higher ground clearance, they need a higher payload capacity. And so that becomes problematic with some of the vehicles that are simply available in today's, in today's market. And the final thing is DAS availability. As many of you know, when we purchase vehicles, we rely on the cooperative agreements that the Department of Administrative Services have negotiated on behalf of, of Iowa. And what we've found, or what I found this last year, is that there simply aren't a lot of electric or hybrid vehicles available from DAS that we're able to purchase from. Now, we can anticipate that those numbers will increase, but they're simply just not there yet. We talked about capabilities, and I've got one other thing that I want to talk about For the, for the departments that have a requirement, we talked to trucks earlier on the heat map, when you take a look at the number of unleaded vehicles we've got, the only two vehicles right now that fulfill many of those capabilities are the, Ford has got a Maverick Hybrid, and we have been able to exploit the, the Ford hybrids this year with a lot of our departments, because it offers a lot of good payload capacity. But when we talk electrics, the only electric option that's available in DAS now is a Ford F-150 Lightning, and that runs $14,000 more than a comparable unleaded vehicle. So to put that in perspective, if we were to purchase two electric Lightnings, we would essentially be cutting out one sedan or one compact vehicle from the fleet, diminishing our capabilities. And so we'll be very cognizant of that, and as Nick and I have talked, I've also talked with the, the city manager, you know, one of the things that affects us is the loss of the federal rebates for the electric vehicles. And we can anticipate that that'll change in the future, but we don't know when that will be. So that's essentially what your fleet looks like. The good news story is that we are making strides, but we're being cognizant of, of cost, characteristics, and DAS available, availability throughout this process.
I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
So the, the hybrids, and we now have their total ownership cost comparison on these?
I do.
Is that data that you could share based on at least today's numbers?
Absolutely.
You said the hybrids were less than?
$3,000 to $8,000 typically.
$3,000 to $8,000 over, over lifetime. And what, what's the range? Is that based on, like, is a police hybrid going to save you more because it's driving more than, say, the library vehicle, or what, what's that range based on?
Yeah, so it was factored off of a 10-year lifecycle, and then I went and found standard planning factors that were available. Actually, I used one of the articles that you provided to, to my boss, Nick Shaw, and that served as some of the framework. And so what I did is created a spreadsheet that auto-calculates everything, and it gives me the ability to go out and add in different incentives to determine at what point is there a break-even, or at what point is it more cost-advantageous? And so I'm absolutely more than willing to share that with you.
Yeah, I'd just love to see the calculation. And then with the, the hybrid, I mean, you talked about both the last two years, the police have, have added the hybrid, is that going to be the standard vehicle going forward?
I anticipate right now it will be, based off the feedback that we've received from the council, because here's the beauty of the, the hybrids. With the police, a lot of us, you know, a lot of people in city government, they work an eight to 10-hour day. The vehicles don't stop after eight or 10 hours. So if we relied on exclusively on batteries, once the battery charge is done, the police are done. The beauty of the hybrids is it's got gas over electric. And so that gives the, the Police Department and our, our users and the departments the ability to continue going that extra mile when the requirement is there, because it's got the regenerative battery technology, as you know. So essentially what that means is when you're operating the vehicle, you apply the brakes, it's got little generators that charge the battery for you. And so it gives our departments the ability to work for extended periods of time. That's the real beauty of, of the hybrids.
One other thing lined up. On the, on the electric side, and what is available from DAS, we have no other options than to go through the Department of Administrative Services, because there's a much broader variety of vehicles available in the market at this point. What is, help me understand why we can only go through DAS?
So what we typically do is we look at the Department of Administrative Services, because they service our local area. Another option is Sourcewell, and that's a, that's a company that adjudicated- Another option is Sourcewell, and that's a company that did hit contracts nationwide, and they're out of Minnesota. I did some research for that, but unfortunately, they don't have any vendors in the local area. DAS really concentrates on the vendors in the local area. So your major Chevy dealerships, your major Ford dealerships, who can service our requirements here. So we have a greater cost avoidance, and we're not paying for vehicles to be delivered from out of state if that were available.
There would be other options if we chose to pursue them, but...
Yeah, we've explored those, but DAS is the most efficient for us. Yes, sir. Okay, so I said that I would get to the replacement criteria, and I don't expect you, there's not going to be a test at the end of this, so you don't need to study the replacement criteria on the right side of the screen. I only give that to you to illustrate that we do have some defined requirements that we look at when we go through our annual acquisition process. It's important to note that these replacement criteria that are depicted were modeled off an independent City of Des Moines Vehicle and Equipment Optimization Study that occurred in 2007. Now, these aren't reflective of exactly what came out of that 2007 report. These numbers have been modified based off of actual city requirements and city demands, and so they've been refined to meet what our requirements are. What I'd like to say, though, is that I had the opportunity to go through the vehicle replacement process this spring as a new employee, and my observations are noted on the left side of the slide. First and foremost, I want the council to know that there is a very deliberate and methodical process that we follow and very specific criteria that we consider before any vehicle is considered for replacement. I'm on social media, probably like a lot of you are, and I've seen a couple people that make comments about how new the city equipment is, and the city doesn't have a budget crisis because I saw all these new vehicles. I'm here to tell you, I welcome anybody, any one of you and any of our citizens that come into our shop and see the age of our fleet, to look at the quality and the condition of our vehicles. While we have made improvements with the fleet, I can assure you that we still have an aging fleet in many areas, and it's a blind spot that our citizens just don't see. And so this very deliberate process helps us shape what the future looks like. The second thing this process allows us to do is it allows us to go through what our equipment needs and requirements are and compare that to what the budget availability is. As many of you can imagine, we typically have a greater amount of equipment needs than we have budget available. And so this is our opportunity to stop, take a look at what the requirements are, compare it against budget availability, and then make hard decisions with the supported departments. And oftentimes, what we find is that they defer a lot of their equipment replacement to later years just based off of the budget and based off of their needs. The third thing that I found this year, we really promoted the alternative fuels. In conjunction with that, we promoted reducing the size of the fleet. And so where typically a department maybe would have requested a Ford F-150 or a Dodge, what we were able to do is persuade them that a Ford Maverick, which offers a similar payload capacity for what their true requirements were, but it also was a fuel-efficient capability that would allow us to get closer to where we want to be for our carbon-neutral plan. And probably the most important thing throughout the whole process is the department stakeholder involvement. Department stakeholders are involved from day one, from all the way from Jay, who works in the Finance Department, down to the individual department stakeholders. Everybody has a vested interest and a vested say in exactly what the equipment is, what the requirements are, and we walk out with a very deep consensus on the way ahead and what we will be purchasing. And so it's important that you know what that process looks like. It's important that you know who's involved. It's not just one or two people sitting at a table, trying to figure it out, playing rock-paper-scissors, best three out of five wins. It's spread equitably amongst the departments, and this is what that process looks like. So here's an accountability slide. I think that, well, I know that I use analytics a lot. Unfortunately, I can only provide you two years' worth of data. The FY '23 data that I would have normally portrayed up here had some data integrity issues, and a lot of that stemmed from the fact of, when we moved into the new facility that we're in in 2023, there were some data issues. And so rather than show you giant variances that were really inaccurate and could send you a false positive or false negative, we're really only looking at two years, and looking ahead, it'll be five years. The key things, the key takeaways here, the unleaded fuel consumption remains pretty static. I can't explain why the electric consumption went down, but looking ahead, I anticipate that the electric consumption will increase as we begin to consolidate city offices into one location. I already know from working with the facilities folks that they are relocating electric charging stations to that parking garage, and so we'll no longer have departments with electric vehicles that have got remote sites where they have to charge. They will literally be able to charge at the location where the motor pool is. So I anticipate that that number will go up. What I really want to focus on for you, though, is in the lower left-hand side. It illustrates the fact that we've implemented the use of biodiesel, as some of you may know. Now, biodiesel comprises 14% of our total fuel consumption for diesel vehicles. We do have the ability to increase that, but we do have a constraint. I've identified that on the slide, and I'm going to work with facilities on that. That constraint is that when the biofuel tanks were installed at MSC-2, for some reason, either the electrical tape wasn't applied correctly to the supply line or the line wasn't buried below the frost line. But in the winter, that line freezes, and it renders the pump useless. And the only way to thaw it is to wait for Mother Nature to warm everything up in the spring, and we can regenerate our biodiesel consumption. Many of our vehicles have got a very complex system on them called Optimus, and that allows us to run the B-100. I don't want to dwell on that too much, but I do want to explain some of the things looking forward that we will be looking at as we pursue trying to use the alternative fuels. The good news is, there's really two good news stories. The first good news story is that this year, we've seen a reduction in the fuel prices. I monitored the fuel prices for about 90 days. We were able to contract unleaded fuel for 3.5% less than we did for fiscal year 2025, and we were able to contract diesel fuel for 8% less than we did in 2025. That, in conjunction with the ability that I was given or the authority that I was given to go to quarterly contracting for fuel, will provide the city an estimated cost avoidance of over $100,000 this fiscal year.
Wow.
And that's pretty substantial. I think that that's a good news story. So I'm very proud of my team, very proud and grateful that Nick allowed us to go to quarterly contracting versus annual contracting so we could really exploit those lower costs throughout the year. So what does all this mean? Well, the city has a total carbon reduction that was created by fuel diversification, adding fuel-efficient vehicles through the vehicle acquisition process, and then also adding electric vehicles to our fleet. I can quantify that by saying this. All of that is best summed up by saying that the city avoided over almost 1,300 metric tons of carbon reduction in CO2e. That probably doesn't mean a lot to anybody, but here's what it means. The so what is, that is the equivalent of 289 gasoline-powered vehicles operating for one year. That's what the investment that the city has made has provided this last year in 2024. I don't have the 2025 data because it runs off of calendar year, and so at the end of this year, I will be able to roll that number up and provide you what that cost avoidance or the CO2 avoidance has been. Any questions? Yes, sir.
So just as a metric going forward, maybe compare the costs and the fuel savings. For example, we're estimating that $3,000 to $8,000 over a lifetime, and that I assume has the higher upfront cost, but getting that understanding of the fuel savings on an annual basis, particularly as we increase, I mean, because I think that's going to be a pretty substantial number the farther along in this transition we get.
Absolutely.
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Our garbage fleet, if I recall, moved to a lease program, and if I recall, it was because the manufacturer of the trucks offered an incredibly good program, that that's the direction that we went. Do we ever look at a lease program? Do manufacturers of vehicles ever offer something that's almost too good to be true?
So we have. You're absolutely right. So the LCO initiative that we entered with Housby-Mac that the council approved is what's going to occur with the solid waste trucks. We've explored it with our sedans and passenger vehicles. Initially, my results turned out that it wasn't cost-effective. The plan that was on the table wasn't cost-effective, and it was more cost-effective for the city to retain their vehicles for a period of 10 years or more. And so right now, the initial exploration proves that it's just not cost-effective for the rest of the fleet, but we'll monitor that moving forward. Okay, there's a lot to digest here, but I want to just drill into this for a moment, and I'll explain why on the next slide. These are the goals and priorities that I developed with my staff, and this is what I have given to the staff within Fleet Services. What this is, is this is a byproduct of me reaching out and speaking with each department as I became a new employee with the city. It was talking with the employees that I have in the shop. And so in the upper left-hand quadrant, what I aim to show you is, this is what we will look like at the end of FY '26. Those are the macro goals, the wave-top-high goals that we've established. The so what for our administrative staff and our mechanics is in the lower portion of the slide. And I don't want you to necessarily read that. We're not going to do a deep dive into that, but I just wanted to explain how this is structured. What I really want to focus on is in the upper right-hand quadrant, the red quadrant. You'll notice that people-first is my very first goal, and that's my very first priority. It's taking care of people, and that's something that's extremely important to me, so much so that as we transition to the next slide, I can tell you that looking ahead and projecting, which I believe you want me to do, the next three to five years at least, we anticipate losing about 154 years' worth of city maintenance experience in the next five years. And this is through attrition, retirements, things of that nature that we project. That's substantial. As we look 10 years ahead, that number swells to almost 300 years of experience. It's safe to say that we will not be able to replace that many years of experience if I don't take a proactive role to try to remedy the situation. And so what you see in the lower right-hand portion is, you see a multi-departmental effort. This was a recruiting brochure that we put together. This was a brainchild that Bob Kraft and I had. We put together the first version, and then we worked with other departments within the city to help us to really refine the product. We worked with HR, and HR had some very good considerations to put in there to help clarify things for prospective applicants, and then Communications just took it to the whole next level. They were remarkable. And so I want to throw kudos out to the Human Resources Office, and I want to throw kudos out to the Communications Office. The so what behind this is, the NADA estimates that there will be 76,000 maintenance technician vacancies annually nationwide. That's pretty tremendous. But what's even more problematic than that is that NADA also anticipates that there will only be 39,000 maintenance technician enrollments in tech schools every year. So what you see is that we've got an average technician shortage of 37,000 technicians nationwide. The Bureau of Labor and Statistics estimates that this career field will grow by 2% annually. I say all of that because it's imperative, and it's paramount now, to get on the front line of the recruiting process for that next generation of mechanic. Maintaining skilled maintenance technicians in the city will reduce reliance on outside services, which means that we won't be relying on outside vendors to perform our maintenance. So let me put that in perspective. That allows the city the responsiveness and flexibility that we need to be able to respond to the needs of our citizens. We're in control of that. We're not relying on somebody else. Imagine for a minute that we have a catastrophic snowstorm, which happens in Iowa sometimes, and we have some snow plows that need to be repaired, but we have to take them to an outside source for repair, and we have to wait for a week or more. In contrast, some of those repairs could be done within a matter of hours within the shop, and the snow plows back on the road. I think it's safe to say that getting ahead of this curve, anticipating the losses that we'll have, and showing this next generation of mechanics the incentives in the city will allow the city to have that responsiveness and flexibility that we need to respond to the citizens. They demand it. Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me an example of a repair that would need to be made if we had a major snowstorm and all of a sudden something happened to one of the snow plows? What kind of repair are we talking about?
Oh, it ranges anything from the cutting edge on the snowplow that goes down on the ground. Those wear out. We've had issues where an oil pan has just rusted through because of the age of the vehicle. You name it, anything can happen during those snowstorms, and we observed it this year. We also have continued to foster relationships with outside partners. So most recently, we invited DMAC to come in. They brought two of their classes through. It was about 50 students, as I recall, and they took a tour of the facility. We also participated in one of their hiring affairs or their career fairs. And what's important to note on that is, recently, we had two mechanics that were placed on light duty because of some physical injuries that they had, and the BRC and Human Resources allowed us to bring on two temporary employees. We just happened to hire two young people who are currently going through DMAC. They've come into our shop, and at the hiring fair, the career fair that they did, for the first time, we had young people that were coming up to the city saying, "I've heard great things about what you're doing. How do I get a job?" And so as we continue to build the synergy to get the next generation of mechanics in for that responsiveness and flexibility for the city, I just wanted to share some of the steps that we had taken on your behalf to really look forward to what the citizens will require. And that concludes everything that Nick wanted me to speak about today. Does anybody else have any questions?
Welcome onboard.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome to Des Moines. Thank you for doing the oversight and really digging in, and thank your staff for the longevity and the dedicated service, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're fortunate to have you.
Thank you, Scott. Have a great day. Thank you, everybody.
So with that as the end of the work session, we will reconvene. We have a closed session at 3:30, and our regular meeting will be at 5 o'clock. So we will see everybody this afternoon.